Good morning and welcome to the reconvene standing committee meeting from Wednesday, July 22, 2020. Would a clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Mrs. Kell Smith.
Ms. Johnson.
Clerk.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our first committee is Finance and Law Committee chaired by myself. We have, I think, three deferred papers. Bill 544.
Bill 544 Resolution authorizing the issue one of a warrant in the total sum of $3,000 in favor of Shayna Harris and her attorney relating to the full and final settlement of litigation at USDC.
Motion.
A motion to approve.
Second.
We read all three together?
Sure, they were all held for executive session, so we can read all three.
Bill 545 Resolution authorizing the issue one of a warrant in favor of Erin Pachek and her attorney Colleen Romic Johnston Esquire relating to the full and final settlement of charges filed in the U.S. People Employment Opportunity Commission and jointly with the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission against the city. Bill number 558 Resolution authorizing the issue one of a warrant in favor of Horn Dollar LLC in the amount of $16,625 as attorneys for their client, Elenah Schleyler, related to the full and final settlement of a litigation filed in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania against the city.
Motion to approve 544, 545, 558.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All bills are recommended. For the record, we are also joined by Councilwoman Strasburger. That takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Bobby Wilson. We have one deferred paper, Bill 492.
Bill 492 Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with community-based organizations for community and economic development for planning assistance in various neighborhoods in the city and providing operating support for these groups and provide for the payment and a cost not to exceed $500,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
I have an amendment that we were working on over the weekend, and I want to thank all councilmembers that worked to make this happen. And so the amendment, I hope everyone can, I think everyone's aware, we've been working on it pretty diligently, so it reflects what we've been talking about. So, motion to amend.
Second.
Bill number 492.
Any discussion on the other?
Very brief.
Councilman Kraus?
Yeah, so my thanks go out to Councilman Wilson, Councilwoman Strasburger, our council president, Councilwoman Gross, Councilman Lavelle, I mean, Councilman Coghill. We did, we worked diligently, cooperatively, and we're able to fashion an amendment that all members agreed to, and I'm happy to have it on the table today and fully support of it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further, any Councilman Coghill?
Yes, I just want to say, Bobby, I think you did a good job in communicating with me throughout. You know, I like what you did, you know, getting and talking to you yesterday as far as what these people do in the neighborhood and getting that money there. I would like to have a broader conversation about gapbo money. I think only 35,000 comes to my district as a whole, and it's much less than any other districts. And I'm fine with that, you know, providing the need in each district. But I have Carrick up there, and they applied last year for this, you know, for this time around, and didn't score very high. I'm hoping they score high next year. So I'm hoping we talk about this and kind of restructure it a little bit, because I have a neighborhood that I think can benefit greatly from having some resources like that, but didn't quite know the process and didn't do a very good job on the application. So with that, yeah, I want to have a broader conversation about them, fully in support today. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate some of the points, but I just wanted to say thanks to Councilman Kraus and, you know, his work with Councilwoman Strasburger and Madam President. So, I really appreciate that, working through that, and, you know, helping my district. I really appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Just one brief last comment. Part of the struggle to assist Hilltop Alliance is because one of their member organization is Carrick, so there will be some help there. But Anthony or Councilman Coghill, I'd be more than happy to work with you to help bring resource into Carrick, because it's more than deserving, and I'd love to be a part of helping you do that.
Bruce, I appreciate that, and we kind of share that Brownsville Road together, which is good in your district, I believe, is good in my district, whether we're talking about, you know, down the road or not. But yeah, again, I think I'm going to need some resources in Carrick for next year. I only have one organization at $35,000, so, you know, I'm hoping to restructure that and talk about that further.
Yeah, great. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, the bill is recommended. That exhausts our agenda. I do want to note that we're also joined by Councilwoman Gross this morning. Any comments from members? Seeing none, we need a motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, July 28, 2020. My name is Kim Clark Baskin, and I'm the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, David Tatro. The following is a piece of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Council President Teresa Kell Smith presents Bill number 596, Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting Acting Pay Approval on behalf of Public Works for Tom Samstag, Paul Abel, Rob Jacobs, Mike Schmidt, Robert Jacobs, Justin All, Her The Acting Pay Policy Revised in June of 2018. That concludes the reading of the legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Today will be City Council's last meeting before their summer recess. City Council's summer recess begins tomorrow, Wednesday, July 29, and will go through Thursday, August 20. City Council will reconvene with a Friday meeting, August 21, at 10:00 a.m. City Council will then resume their regularly scheduled weekly regular and standing committees meeting beginning Tuesday, August 25, at 10:00 a.m. Thank you for tuning in. Have a wonderful summer.
Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, July 28, 2020. Meeting announcement, Council's recess will begin tomorrow, Wednesday, July 29, and end Thursday, August 20. No meetings are scheduled tomorrow. Council's next meeting will be Friday, August 21, at 10:00 a.m. Will the clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
I see him.
I'm here, I'm here, I'm here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus. Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kell Smith President.
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you. As we join together from our remote locations, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain silent for a moment of silence. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our next order of business is proclamation. We have two wheels of council, Councilman Kraus. Do you want to go first?
He's on mute.
We have two of us counsel from Councilman Kraus. Councilman, do you want to unmute your phone?
He's talking intently.
Talking to someone out the window.
Oh. I didn't know that was him with his head turned. I couldn't see. We're waiting for you, Councilman.
Oh my god.
Councilman Kraus, we're waiting for you. You have two wheels of council?
Oh, forgive me. I'm sorry, I had a call from a constituent coming.
No, 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 that's okay.
So, was the proc red? Forgive me.
No, was that what you want?
General, we do procs before wheels of council, right?
Yes.
Yes, maybe we do the Rosemary Ketchum proclamation first, please, Madam Clerk?
Sure. Councilman Kraus presents Bill 597. Whereas after securing a plurality of votes in a close election in Willing City Council Ward III, Rosemary Ketchum is now the first openly transgender official elected in the state of West Virginia. And whereas with only 27 out trans elected officials, Ms. Ketchum draws attention to the vast lack of representation of the estimated 1.4 million trans people in the nation. And whereas on much of the national attention of Ms. Ketchum's victory are local issues like tackling homelessness and poverty in Willing, as well as her background as a community organizer, and her expertise in mental health. And whereas Ms. Ketchum has shown immense bravery by not letting someone else determine who should run for public office and rather deciding to shadow, to shatter the lavender ceiling by herself. Whereas Ms. Ketchum is determined to make Willing a model city of a positive relationship between compassionate law enforcement and effective rehabilitation centers. In Ms. Ketchum's own words, "Don't offer to make history. We run for a difference, and as if history is made, so be it. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize the history that has been made in a process of Rosemary Ketchum's victory and commends her resolve to make a difference in Willing. And for the resolve that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Wednesday, July 1, 2020, Ketchum Day in the City of Pittsburgh."
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Motion to approve.
Do we have a motion to approve in a second?
A little excited there. I'm just a little excited, Madam President. Yes, motion to approve, please.
In a second.
Yeah, thank you. There, I do have comment. It is brief. To quote Rosemary, she said that "we don't run for public office to make history, we run for public office to make a difference, and if history is made in the course of that action, then so be it." I had an opportunity to talk with Rosemary after her election, and I just, I called to congratulate her on her courage and what it would take to be a young transgendered woman that would seek public office, especially in a small town like Willing. I have some familiarity with it, because part of my mother's family settled in Willing, and so I know the town pretty well. And when I talked to Rosemary, I said, "I just assumed that the seats were at large, and it was a seven-member council, and you needed the entire electorate to be able to achieve a seat." But it isn't. It's council by district. And so, in her council district, she was able to achieve elected office as a member of their city council. So, I just told her how very brave I was of her, how very brave she was to go out and do that, and how very proud of her I was. It's a wake-up call for all of us. There's a, there is a new electorate out there, and it is bold, and it is looking for substantive change, and that change is inclusivity and an end to racism and an end to prejudice around the spectrum. And it's being proved again and again and again by the people that are being elected to public office. And so, I just didn't want the moment to pass without publicly acknowledging her as a council, and then we'll send the proc down to her as a way to just say congratulations. So, thank you all for being a part of this and allowing me to do this.
Thank you. And we have a motion in a second. We never took a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Gross, it's approved. And then the next one you have is the will of council?
Yes, please. I have two, Madam President.
The wills of council.
Bill number 598. Whereas Pennsylvania Health Secretary Dr. Rachel Levine, the highest-ranking medical professional in the Commonwealth, who has appointed, who was appointed by Governor Wolf and unanimously confirmed by the legislator to the position in 2018, and who previously served as Pennsylvania's Physician General, was recently the intended target of actions meant to humiliate her and all members of the queer and trans community. And whereas Dr. Levine is an accomplished physician, a graduate of Harvard College and the Tulane University School of Medicine, a current professor of Pediatrics and Psychiatry at the Penn State College of Medicine, a matter expert and active advocate for LGBTQIA+ individuals and so much more. And whereas her steadfast leadership during the current pandemic health crisis has been integral in saving thousands of lives in this Commonwealth. And whereas the LGBTQIA+ community as a whole experiences violence, isolation, hatred, and discrimination, but none more than the members of the transgender community who are subject to simultaneously racism, homophobia, transphobia, and misogyny in their personal and professional lives on a daily basis. And whereas the Bloomsburg Fair stands as a reminder that transphobia and hatred towards LGBTQIA+ individuals is pervasive in the public eye and continues to be normalized here and across the states. Whereas neither the federal government nor this Commonwealth has enacted robust explicit legal protections for individuals who are transgender or are gender expansive against discrimination they face in employment, housing, and health care. And whereas Governor Wolf's response not only condemned those actions, but asks all to take on the responsibility of stepping in when they see transphobic or bigoted actions to not be a bystander. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh stands with Governor Wolf and Health Secretary Levine in admitting of the vile display of transphobia exhibited at the Bloomsburg Fair, and asks that we take on the responsibility of speaking up when we see something.
Can we have a motion to approve in a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Brief discussion, please, Madam President. So, I'm hard-pressed to find someone more accomplished than Dr. Levine, and how lucky we are to have her at this heightened time of crisis unlike anything that we have ever seen in our lifetime. And for small-minded, bigoted people to go after Dr. Levine because of her transgender status is just important on every level. She's the consummate professional, and we are so very lucky to have her in a leadership role at this time. And so, when I read the report, I was so encouraged by Governor Wolf's response to what happened, and I just wanted to codify that this council stands with Governor Wolf and with Dr. Levine in that we don't, we won't tolerate transphobia on any level, but especially in the case of someone that is as accomplished and making such sacrifice and such difference in this pandemic, that it made it especially egregious, and I just needed to call it out, and I appreciate your support in helping me to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you. Yeah, I've been really, really impressed with Dr. Levine, but I just have to say that even, even if, even for people out there who disagree with the health recommendations that she's making, it's completely inexcusable, inexcusable in my mind to attack her for who she is. And that's what's happening. I mean, it's, it's the Bloomsburg Fair incident, and that was terrible. That's a fair that I've actually attended in the past. I went to college up near there. And yeah, I'm never going back again unless they change their tune, but I, I know that Dr. Levine is taking abuse from the public on a daily basis because of who she is and, and her identity, and it's important to me. And I, you know, I have to believe that those who keep on fighting and speaking truth to power in this regard will help to change the hearts and minds of people, and that this changes generationally. And I support those who have, you know, are consistently raising their voice in support of transgender and gender expansive individuals, and, and I stand with, I stand with them. So, thank you, Councilman Kraus, for bringing this issue and to the council and allowing us to support Governor Wolf and Dr. Levine in this regard.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other members?
If I could just add an interrogative there. Yeah, it is, you know, it's, it's, it's a new day out there. There is a new electorate. There is a new constituency that is emerging. And even those in positions of power that would like to circumvent through judicial appointments, we are showing that that's simply not happening. Some would argue a conservative Supreme Court right now that was to fulfill supposedly a conservative agenda have ruled that sexual orientation is clearly part of sex as defined, and that on a federal level, we have, we have outlawed discrimination based on sex, including sexual orientation and your gender fluidity and who you may identify with. And that's coming from the federal government down. And that's not happening in a vacuum. That is generations of people working their, you know what, off to make these things happen. But who's bringing it across the goal line is a very, very young, very informed, and very active electorate that is saying, "We no longer want to live in a country that's based on racism and transphobia and homophobia and prejudice. We, we want to be an inclusive nation and inclusive culture, and we want to welcome and respect everyone." And that, you know, at 66 years old, and I've been in this fight since I was like 20, is a very encouraging sign to see.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members?
Madam President?
Yes, is that Councilman Coghill?
Great. I just wanted to compliment and commend Councilman Kraus, not only for today's will of council, and just for, you know, the years I've seen him on council. You're a real champion, Bruce, for the LGBTQIA+ community. And, you know, I'm glad to take your lead on all those issues. So, thank you for what you do.
Yeah, thank you, Anthony.
And I'm so impressed Councilman Coghill remembered all the letters. So that shows you're doing your job here, Bruce.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. And we voted, right?
Okay, we did.
Okay, and then the next, I'm sorry, Councilman Kraus?
Yes, thank you. May I have that readiness and entirety as well, please?
Your Councilman Kraus presents Bill number 599. Whereas U.S. Representative John Robert Lewis of Troy, Alabama died on July 17, 2020 in Atlanta, Georgia at 80 years old, and at the end of a life devoted to civil rights, progress, and combating disenfranchisement of minority voters. And whereas prior to being elected to Congress in 1986, Representative Lewis was the chairman of the Student Nonviolent Coordinating Committee, a freedom writer, and an organizer and speaker during the March on Washington. And whereas Representative Lewis's steadfast commitment to civil rights led him to organize with Jose Williams the march from Selma to Montgomery during which he was beaten for supporting equality in the violence known as Bloody Sunday. And whereas his later role as Director of the Voter Education Project allowed him to play a central role in registering millions of voters. And whereas Representative Lewis's career was marked with sacrifice and numerous milestones of success. And where now more than central that the Voting Rights Act is expanded ahead of the November presidential election. And whereas, to honor Representative Lewis's legacy, the Council of the City of Pittsburgh wishes that the John R. Lewis Voting Rights Act of 2020 should be enacted into federal law. And whereas the bill, in addition to other measures seeking reversal of disenfranchisement, would restore the rural directing states with a history of voter discrimination to obtain federal approval prior to changing voter laws. And whereas the Council of the City of Pittsburgh urges Congress to renew the Voting Rights Act, improve the voter registration process, and eliminate unnecessary hurdles. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh urges the U.S. Congress and President to support the John R. Lewis Voting Rights Act of 2020 to ensure that upcoming presidential election and all others thenceforth are fair and uncorrupted.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to approve in a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved, Councilman Kraus?
Yeah, brief discussion, please. So, Council President, I've shared this with you over the last five or six, maybe even seven weeks now. I have been, we and the electorate of African-American leadership throughout the Hilltop have been meeting to discuss a myriad of issues, and one of them being the police reform bills and other things we'd like to see. We have a meeting with the mayor coming up here on Thursday morning, and a lot of the discussion that we've had has really been around the upcoming election and protecting against voter disenfranchisement. So this action was especially important to Hilltop leadership to make certain that we were vocal and public about our desire to see the Voting Rights Act of 2020 clearly adopted and implemented to protect voters from disenfranchisement. We're already seeing from the highest levels of authority, those in positions of power wishing to sow seeds of discord and mistrust and purging voter roles and pretending that if we go with mail-in voting, that there's going to be extensive voting fraud and trying to, you know, push this false and very damaging narrative. And we want to push back against it, and we're going to push back against it. And we, we're already beginning to outline a plan with their help and with help of Bob in my office and Brasha to make certain that there's nothing that impedes anyone from wishing to register their vote in this upcoming presidential election, which is clearly the most important election of my lifetime, I believe of our lifetime. So, once again, I just appreciate members supporting and helping us to carry this message of how important it is to protect voters' rights, especially at this very, very critical time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? Seeing none, I remember, I want to thank you, Councilman Kraus, for both the wills of council and your proclamation. And also, I do have one more proclamation that's mine to be read into the record.
Go on, take a vote on it, Council.
We did.
We did, Madam.
We did, we did first.
We voted before.
The motion was written in its entirety. The question was written in its entirety, Council President?
No, just synopsis, yeah.
Okay. Council President Cal Smith presents Bill Number 600. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend Pittsburgh professional women for their service to small businesses and entrepreneurs and support during this COVID-19 pandemic. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, July 28, 2020 to be Pittsburgh Professional Women Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Can we have a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? Proclamation's approved. I just want to acknowledge that the work of Beth Caldwell, who lives in my district, who is involved in a lot of the women's, professional women's organizations across the city. And she just does a tremendous job. And I just want to acknowledge her. I've actually asked her to give a proclamation for you. She never wanted to acknowledge, finally convinced her. Okay. That moves us on to our next order of business, which is the comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before city council. Profanity will not be permitted. May we have the first speaker, please?
Is Councilman Wilson not presenting his two?
We have two for Councilman Wilson.
Okay, I didn't have those. Okay.
Councilman, do you want them read in your entirety or just the last two paragraphs?
I apologize, Councilman Wilson.
Sorry, I always have trouble with my mute. I have these messages that come right up in front of my mute button. Um, yes, if you could please, not, not in its entirety, but just, just what's the, the text on the screen?
Okay. Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 601. Whereas Sarah Jean is an irreplaceable wife, mother, community leader and dear friend whose passing greets us all and whom we shall all dishonor. Now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh declares Tuesday, July 28, 2020 to be Sarah Jean Herbert Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
You have a motion to approve in a second?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? Proclamation's approved, Councilman. Do you have anything you want to add, Councilman Wilson?
Yes, yes. I just wanted to, you know, we lost, in my district, we lost someone who was, worked tirelessly at the, the food bank. She was called to work there 20 years ago and never left. And especially in times like these, you know, this was her time where she was called to action. And she really served her community that way, especially during this pandemic. So, we're sad for her loss and, and we hope their, her family finds peace.
Thank you, Councilman. And you have a second, Will, or second proclamation?
Yes, 602.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 602. Whereas across her long life in Pittsburgh's North Side, Lillian Roush has always given a friendly word to everyone she encounters. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh declares Thursday, August 13, 2020, her 100th birthday, Lillian Roush Day here in our most livable city of Pittsburgh.
We have a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
All in favor? As opposed? Proclamation's approved, Councilman. Do you have anything else you want to add?
I just wanted to do something special for a pillar in the community that turned 100 years old.
Oh, nice. Happy birthday.
Yeah.
Okay. With that said, we'll now move on to our public comment. And we'll call our first speaker. I already read the comments. Keep the, please keep the comments limited to matters before council. William Parker, first speaker. Mr. Parker?
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, my name is William Parker. I'm the CEO of Vinspin. I just wanted to start off addressing Ricky Burgess. Last, a couple of weeks ago, on, I believe, July the 14th, he mentioned that someone told him in the past that now was not the time for a racial equity commission. And I want to ask him, well, taking that advice has put us in a situation that we're in right now. And I want to ask him, what will he listen to or who would he listen to next that will hinder our progress? And how does a man of faith, of reverence stop himself from doing what's right for the people he's been elected to serve? Now, I reached out to his secretary, which her name was Alicia, and she had no information on the legislation or the selection progress based around the racial equity committee. And I believe that her lack of knowledge is a direct result of a lack of leadership on what Burgess has been having. So I had to go and obtain some of this information myself. And when I found out in that legislation that was drafted, that there was only a seven person committee to be formed. And my question is, how do any of you expect for us to tackle a situation such as systemic racism with a seven person committee? I, I don't see that that's achievable. We at least need to start off with 11, seven government officials and four more community leaders who are on the front lap of this issue. I also seen in there that there was a clause, like an appointment, like the mayor can appoint more people along the way or a council can vote people in. But let's get this right the first time. It should have been a legislation of 11 people to be on this committee to start with, to begin with. I also want to mention that our city right now is booming in a technology industry. Okay, so we need more tech investments. That's what we're failing at right now. Who do you know? Ask yourself, who do you know right now is a black entrepreneur in Pittsburgh? Okay, we need to bring more awareness to this. If we plan on getting serious, we have to start there. And we have to start with companies like Innovation Works. Innovation Works, you're all aware of them. They're a government-funded technology investment firm located on the north side. Their portfolio, we have to look deep into their portfolio because to my knowledge, I don't know of one African-American male that has received a direct investment from Innovation Works in their 20-year history, who hasn't had to go through Alpha Land. And even there, the numbers are low. I also, we-
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dixie Timmets.
Who is it?
I don't know.
Speak, I'm muted, see if it's you. Just say, just say.
Is it for Dixie?
Yes.
All right, because I didn't hear, I didn't hear the name. All right, I'm ready when you're ready.
We're ready. Go ahead. Good morning.
Good morning. Dixie Timmets, Wallingford Street in the Oakland Shady Side area. What in blue bloody blazes is wrong with our once daily newspaper? When a great hero for the people, all the people died last week, there was nothing, nothing in our paper. Television news, yes, but our paper? Finally, after scouring the Sunday paper, I found a small article from the Associated Press, not our own writers. It is impossible to have proper self-government if we are not educated to the task. We need good information in order to be good citizens. The people must know before they can act, and there is no educator to compare with the press. Our people don't believe that their voices count. They want their opinions to matter, because our vote is our voice. Now we are bessest, beset by a highly contagious disease that makes the act of going to the polls a personal hazard, a life-threatening hazard for many. What can be done? Voting ballots by mail. In other words, absentee ballots for everyone. And when this has been done, there have been record turnoff, turnouts. Fears are justifiably growing about the strength of our voting systems. Is there time to mail ballots to everyone? I hope so. I pray so. In the 2018 Michigan voting, voting, they drew record voters in local elections with the move to voting ballots by mail. Now they want to mail absentee ballot applications to 7.3 million registered voters. Do you know that they can be stopped? And never, never assume that our voting, our votes are protected. One other thing to consider, polling sites may only be able to handle half their regular volume because of social distancing and safety requirements. And there was and will be fewer poll workers. Would you want to work 10 to 12 hours where anyone could come in and vote, possibly infecting you? Voting can matter. It can. Please help us. Help all of us and fight the good fight. Be our heroes and show us how to be heroes too. Thank you all for what you do that is good.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carmen Brown. Good morning, Carmen.
Good morning. I have a couple of questions about some bills that I think the council should look at before they pass. And that's Bill 0538, 0539, and 0540. I've talked to my community members and we're a little upset because first and foremost, we didn't know anything about these projects. And also too, the URA continues to buy land, but when they buy land, they don't never, you know, they give it to the developers and they don't never really include any of the community members. And I think that, you know, for you all to just go ahead and give this land over, I think that we need to have some more conversations about this. And especially, I was looking at the Steel City Squash. I, I would love to have and love to see, you know, things built for the children. But there also is property that we're looking at too, that also, I know some of my community members tried to obtain and could not, could not get it. So again, you know, before you all start passing and giving all this land over to the URA, because when it wants to get to the URA, we don't have, we don't have an option anymore. And this is what we're talking about, the inequality. This is where you talk about systematic racism, you know, because our communities don't have an opportunity to obtain this land or try to purchase it. When we do try to purchase it, oh, we can't get it, you know, or there's a problem, you know, there's somebody, they're holding it. So I don't think the URA at this time, until they explain to the community or talk to the community and explain exactly what they're going to do with this land. And especially the Kelly Street, this Kelly Street property as well, because that property, there were some people that were trying to buy some of that land and was not able to do it. So I don't think it's fair. And I think that this process that they go through, because they go through y'all's process and y'all just go ahead and give them our land. And that's not fair. Until we have a real conversation about this, this should not, this should not go through. I understand there's letters of support, but again, like I said, is that the people, we don't, we don't have that opportunity and it's taken away from us. Because again, y'all, y'all just go ahead and pass this land over. And again, like I said with the URA, they don't, when we go down there, we try to, you know, talk to them about some of the land that they have given some of these developers. You know, like I said, we don't have any say so. And also the, the Steel City Squash, okay, I'm looking at something here. I pulled up some information on Shetland. There's a structure over there and it was somebody that did try to apply for that particular property and wasn't able to get it. So again, you know, I, I think that council needs to really consider looking or getting some, you know, engagement and, and having some residents talk about this before the URA even obtains or gets any of this land. So again, like I said, is that, you know, it's just unfair. It's just an unfair process.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. And now can we have Randall Taylor? Mr. Taylor's not here. We'll go on to Elaine Ekman.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Hi. My name is Elaine Ekman from the Carrick neighborhood. I want to talk about the referendum to give more power to the Citizens Police Review Board is only as good as the accountability of the board itself. Article 8 of the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter states that all city records should be public, but somehow the records of the Citizens Police Review Board are exempt from the right to know law, even for the citizens who filed the complaints against the police. In other words, people are forbidden from seeing reports for their own cases. And that's how it was explained to me by David Elwood of the CPRB. I was told that the only way for a person to access records of their own case is to request a public hearing. However, from 1998 to 2007, the CPRB has only approved a public hearing in 3% of its cases. Furthermore, the board hasn't posted an annual report on its website since 2017, and it's only posted three annual reports in the past 10 years. And with that in mind, the information within the most recent report is sketchy and incomplete. It tells you that only 13% of the officers were suspended for their actions over 19 years, but it doesn't say for how long they were suspended or whether they were still paid while on those suspensions. The report tells how many complaints had full investigations authorized, but it doesn't give the outcomes of those investigations. So, the public doesn't really know if the police are being disciplined at all. Likewise, the other entity which is supposed to keep the police in check, the Office of the Municipal Investigations, they have similar statistics. Although the OMI actually publishes their annual reports annually, the information in the reports is cryptic and not defined. From what could be gathered from their 2019 report is that they receive three times more complaints about the police than all other departments combined. However, most of their cases are deemed unfounded, not resolved, or exonerated. And those cases which are not are just given this broad definition of sustained. The report doesn't define what sustained means, and there's no indication of disciplinary action being taken against the police ever, only sustained. So it appears to me as though both these departments cherry-picked their investigations in order to dismiss complaints or decide with the police, and then they use cryptic language in their reports as subterfuge to make it seem like they have accountability. We can't have accountability with the police department if the departments designed to keep the police in check are not accountable themselves. Please fix this. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Davis?
Good morning, Council.
Good morning.
Good morning, Council. It is my honor to read what Polly Bizwas of 154 Home Street had hoped to say to you today, but her work scheduled this morning included a mandatory conference call. I'm here today to voice my support for the historic nomination of 186 Home Street. I've been a resident of Lawrenceville on and off since 1985, and I've been a homeowner and resident of Home Street for over 15 years now. During that time, I've witnessed a lot of change. Some of it has been welcome, but the steady erection of cheap houses by overzealous developers is not. They are contributing to the erasure of the architecture that makes this neighborhood so beautifully unique and are negating the reasons this neighborhood was designated as nationally historically significant in the first place. So I'm here to say, stop. Let this be the stopping point for crowding our neighborhood with more thoughtless, wasteful, unfitting eyesores. Stop letting people who don't live here or work here make decisions that affect those of us who do. Instead, let's please move toward a more mindful maintaining and building of a community. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Apiala.
Greetings. Can you hear me?
Good morning, yes.
Good morning. Peace, love, this is Apiala. I am an Aboriginal Indian of America. I like to shed some light on an issue we are having in being able to move about freely on our land. I'd like to bring light to 49 US Code 102, the Department of Transportation. I'd like to specifically read the section marked F1 and 2. So, Section F says Deputy Assistant Secretary for Tribal Government Affairs. In accordance with federal policy promoting Indian self-determination, the Department of Transportation shall have within the Office of the Secretary, a Deputy Assistant Secretary for Tribal Government Affairs appointed by the President to plan, coordinate, and implement the- and implement the Department of Transportation policy and programs, serving Indian tribes and tribal organizations, and to coordinate tribal transportation programs and activities to all offices and administrations of the department, and to be a patient, excuse me, to be a participant in any negotiating, rulemaking related to, or having an impact on, projects, programs, or funding associated with the tribal transportation program. Or two, reservation of trust obligation. In carrying out this title, the Secretary shall be responsible to exercise the trust obligation of the United States to Indians and Indian tribes to assure that the rights of a tribe or individual Indian are protected. Persevation of the United States responsibility, nothing in this title shall be absent, absolved the United States from any responsibility to Indians and Indian tribes, including responsibilities derived from the trust relationship in any treaty, executive order, or agreement between the United States and Indian tribes. It's very important that the police officers, um, as well as the judges and all those who take an oath on the Constitution, understand that our land and our ability to travel upon our land shall not be infringed upon. And this message needs to get out to all law enforcement across the city, across the state, across the country in general, because there's always, uh, those who feel that they are above the law, not necessarily guided by the law. So this needs to be promoted and pushed and educated to all those involved so that we can move forward with fixing our land and restoring, uh, positive energy within our communities. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And our next speaker is Mary Coleman.
Can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. My name is Mary Coleman. I live at, for, on Forty-third Street in Lawrenceville. I've been a resident for twenty-six years. Why is the value of a city lot measured by how many townhouses you can build on it? That's what is happening in Lawrenceville and probably all over the city. But at one eighty-six Home Street, we have a tree-lined yard with a nearly two-hundred-year-old historic Greek Revival house. The plan is to demolish the house to build five new townhouses that Lawrenceville does not need. The result being an overcrowded corner with four-story houses, rooftop decks with no trees and no yards. All the green space will be gone. The Ewald House is the gateway to the well-maintained homes on Home Street. The potential for this house is great. Although I would prefer it remain a single-family home, it could be made into apartments or condos, a bed and breakfast, or maybe a community meeting place like it had been in the nineteen fifties and sixties, a venue for weddings, birthdays, graduations, and family reunions. The Historic Review Commission and City Planning have said that one eighty-six Home Street has significant history and worthy of the city historic designation. Lawrenceville received the national designation in two thousand and nineteen with the Ewald House contributing to that honor. How can we be talking about tearing it down? Once it's gone, it's gone. I ask you to please grant the city historic designation for the Ewald House. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Caliopi Levendos. And I'm going to spell the last name just in case I mispronounced it. L E V E N D O S. Okay, I don't see anyone. So we have Susan Engler.
Good morning, Council. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Great, thank you. Uh, my name is Susan Engler. I'm currently a resident, resident of central Lawrenceville. Um, I'm here to urge Council to support historic designation for the Ewald House at one eighty-six Home Street. I've been a resident, homeowner, uh, and a taxpayer in this neighborhood for nearly fifteen years, watching it evolve with explosive steady growth. Um, I want to urge Council to consider five impacts that, um, the ruling for historic designation can help to achieve, and importantly, to help set a precedent for future rulings. Number one is advancing sensitive and appropriate neighborhood development. Number two is retaining the character that attracted development in the first place, which will continue, hopefully, to be critical to attracting new residents and businesses. Number three is gentrification issues and the associated inequities related to some new developments here. Number four is consideration for putting priority on community needs versus developer needs. And finally, number five, adhering to the Lawrenceville Community Plan, a thought-out and, and comprehensive document compiled by the community with explicit comments about preserving what already exists here. I hope you'll choose to align with the diligent, researched, reasoned efforts of the H R C and the Planning Commission, who have already rendered their verdict regarding the historic significance of the Ewald House. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Hi, Kohana.
Greetings of peace, O C O. You hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. What I would like to say is, in recent years, we have witnessed a growing number of outcries from Indigenous people, such as myself, denouncing the lack of compliance with documents and resolutions that has existed for a long time, such as the I L O, the Convention one sixty-nine, the United Nations Declaration of Rights of Indigenous People, the American Declaration of Rights of Indigenous People, also the Constitution excluding Indians not taxed as explained in Article One, Section Two, Clause Three of the Constitution. Especially when you are seeking to develop our land without our free prior and informed consent before projects on our land take place. This is in defense of our ancestral land, our territories, and we are speaking out against these abuses of extraction, extracting our resources, our minerals, from our land and then turning around and charging us for them. This is a very erroneous act upon our indigenous natural resources and upon our land. It is very disrespectful to Indigenous people to extract these resources without our free prior and informed consent. All for the profit of municipalities and large corporations to benefit without consideration or a reach back to Indigenous people. The focus on profit and the companies who are doing these heinous acts have begun to be accelerated for economic purposes, again, without our free prior and informed consent. And considering the people who have been here for hundreds and thousands of years, since time ever was, since time immemorial, there are mounds that still exist here in the Pittsburgh area. There are forts that have been here prior to colonization, prior to the arrival of people like William Pitt, who obviously have come here from England, as it is, there is a placard, a bust statue of him in the city-county building. And it's not like the city doesn't know of this, because there are also above him, embedded into the pillars of the city-county building, an image of an Indigenous person, whether it be accurately depicted or not. So this negative impact on the lives of the daily life and natural resources of our people is very.
Thank you. Shaman and Poma, Poma? I'll spell it just in case.
Poma, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Love and light. So I would like to begin by explaining what a shaman is. A shaman is a medical, uh, what you would call a medical, uh, person, someone who is in medicine. We are in natural medicine and we have a right to adhere our own policies on how we heal ourselves. According to Undrip, Article twenty-four, right to traditional medicines. Indigenous peoples have the right to their traditional medicines and to maintain their health practices, including the conversation of their vital medicinal plants, animals, and minerals. Indigenous individuals also have the right to access, without any discrimination, to all social and health services. Number two, Indigenous individuals have an equal right to the enjoyment of the highest attainable standard of physical and mental health. State shall take the necessary steps with a view to achieving progressively the full realization of this right. I have been discriminated, my people have been discriminated during this COVID plandemic, as I will call it, such, because there's much research from many of your doctors who are now speaking up in Washington against the propaganda of these masks that do not stop anyone from catching a virus. This propaganda is being affected on my people, on our people, and we are not a part of your citizenship, we are not a part of your governmental structure, we are our own nation with a government-to-government relationship. And we are tired of being caddled into your issues and your situation that has nothing to do with us. We have been healing ourselves since time immemorial, and as a matter of fact, we healed the colonizers, the Europeans, the pilgrims, the Amish, the Africans that were brought here. We healed everyone because you knew nothing of our medicinal plants, you knew nothing of our ways and our cultures, but as we began to heal you, we also taught you and we trained you, and then you stole our information and then you classified it in such a category and called it medicine. These things will be addressed expeditiously. We are here, we are not going anywhere, and we have a right to identify as we choose and to move about freely on this land without masks. This is an offense. There are many of your organizations, i.e. businesses, that are also underneath the corporate structure of the United States corporation, you call the United States government, and they are in error in violating our constitutional rights as well as our universal rights, our indigenous rights, our aborigine. We are the aborigine natives of this land, and we will no longer tolerate this. I yield.
Thank you. Next speaker, Joy Edwards.
Hello, Councilmembers, and good morning. My name is Joy Borelli Edwards. I am a business stakeholder in Lawrenceville and have, and have owned and operated Borelli Edwards Art Gallery since nineteen seventy-eight, and relocated to Lawrenceville at thirty-five eighty-three Butler Street in two thousand and seven. My mission in my work is to support Pittsburgh artists, exhibiting at least fifty percent women. I have always exhibited a diversity of races and ethnicities and have welcomed all into my space. The Ewald House at one eighty-six Home Street has intrigued me since my move to Lawrenceville in two thousand and seven. I thought it then and now an architectural gem and in need of restoration. It has, it has significant importance to Pittsburgh's architectural history. People are attracted to Pittsburgh because we retain our historical bones and it defines our city. I am prepared to pay the full market value for the Ewald House. I understand as a businesswoman that an historical designation should not harm the seller's financial remuneration. If I have the opportunity to purchase the Ewald House, I will restore it and maintain the green space it provides. We have a surplus of condos and townhomes in Lawrenceville. This would be an opportunity for the city to show off its unique historical character. As an art gallery owner, my intention would be to move my gallery there with an outdoor sculpture, um, garden, and, and my, continue my mission of showing a diverse range of Pittsburgh artists and encourage all to enter. Postscript, there was no notice of the sale of this property other than a Facebook posting that I saw, um, just a short while ago. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers, move on to our next order of business, which is presentation of papers.
We have, we have one more, Shirley Ireland.
One more, Shirley Ireland, I apologize.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Shirley Gureleski Ireland. I would like to speak today about the Ewald House at one eighty-six Home Street, um, to become a historic landmark of Pittsburgh. I encourage the H R C Commission and Council to be in favor of this nomination. As a child, I have many fond memories of visiting my grandmother, Mary Gureleski there at the Ewald House, when she served as the President, Secretary, and Treasurer for the American Union Polish Brotherhood of Saint Joseph. She is credited in sponsoring the naturalization of hundreds of aliens of all creeds and races over this time period. She also helped to secure mortgages for many immigrants who settled in the Lawrenceville area. Please take this as one of the many examples that illustrate both the historic importance of the Ewald House to the Lawrenceville community and Pittsburgh community, and to the individuals within these communities. I hope that the H R C and Council would vote to conserve the Ewald Home and preserve its legacy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That brings us on to, moves us on to presentation of papers. We have, um, Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, good morning, Council.
Good morning, hard.
Good. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Madam President.
Good morning, thank you, Councilman. Okay. Councilwoman Gross, sorry, Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Good morning. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Good morning, Madam President, no new papers.
Good morning, thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, good morning, Councilman. And Councilwoman Conner, Chair of Public Safety Services.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, good morning, Councilman. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, good morning, Councilwoman. And Councilwoman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Good morning, Madam President, no new papers.
Good morning, Councilman. And myself, the Chair of, um, Committees of Hearings. And we have a communication for, one for acting paper, Public Works.
Council President presents Bill number five ninety-six, Communication from Kevin Paulis, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting an acting pay approval on behalf of Public Works for a Tom Samstag, Paul Abel, Rob Jacobs, Mike Schmidt, Robert Jacobs, Justin Adenall, per the acting pay revised in June twenty eighteen.
Thank you.
Motion, motion to read, receive, file.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's approved. We'll move on to the unfinished business and for the appointments. Can you read those, man?
Yes. Bill number four fifty-eight, Resolution Appointing Dr. Sharon Higginbotham to serve as a member of the Gender Equity Commission for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Bill number four sixty-four, Resolution Appointing Ms. Leah Lizarondo to serve as a commission for the Commission on Human Relations for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Bill number four sixty-five, Resolution Appointing Ms. Brittany Beasley to serve as a Commissioner for the City of Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Bill number four sixty-six, Resolution Appointing Mr. Alberto Benzacue to serve as a Commissioner for the Commission on Human Relations for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Bill number four seventy, Resolution Appointing Mrs. Brice. Bill number 470, Resolution Appointing Mrs. Brayette Poole to serve as a member of the Ethics Hearing Board for a term to expire June 30th, 2023.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve in second.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And their most appointed me, appointments are approved. And I just want to thank the Mayor's Office for giving us such, um, a great group of people to approve them. They're really impressive group. So, thank you to the Mayor's Office. And our next order of business is reports of committee for final action. Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill number 589, Reported the Committee on Finance and Law for July 22nd, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 410, Resolution Authorizing and Directing the City Controller to transfer a total of $250,000 from police salaries to the Stop the Violence Fund within the 2020 operating budget. Bill number 512, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Joan Pessadilis for professional legal services for an employment-related matter before the Human Relations Commission for an amount not to exceed $24,000. Bill number 543, Resolution, Amending Resolution number 55, which authorized the mayor through the Bureau of Neighborhood Empowerment to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding to plan and implement the creation of Financial Empowerment Centers Fund within the city and further providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $20,000. Amendment includes additional $60,000 for the Financial Empowerment Centers to hire an additional financial coach through Neighborhood Allies. Bill number 544, Resolution Authorizing the Issue One of a Warrant in the total sum of $3,000 in favor of Shanda Harris and her attorneys relating to the full and final settlement of litigation at USDC. Bill number 545, Resolution Authorizing the Issue One of a Warrant in favor of Erin M. Palcheck and her attorney, Colleen Ramage Johnston Esquire, in an amount of $5,000 relating to the full and final settlement of charges filed with the U.S. Equal Employment Opportunity Commission at EEOC and jointly with the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission against the city. Bill number 546, Resolution Authorizing the Issue One of a Warrant in the amount of $5,500 to Robert A. Creo in connection with labor arbitration services. Bill number 556, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety and Finance and Public Works to enter into an agreement for the acquisition of real property and execution of related agreements for the site of the former U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs facilities as the Highland Drive Medical Center for the construction of new facilities and renovation of existing facilities for emergency management and law enforcement uses by City's Department of Public Safety. Bill number 558, Resolution Authorizing the Issue One of a Warrant in favor of Horn Dollar LLC in the amount of $16,625 as attorneys for their client, Elina Schiller, related to the full and final settlement of a litigation in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania against the city. Bill number 575, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into a grant agreement with Allegheny County for the purpose of receiving coronavirus release funds in the amount of $6,200,000, which shall be used to reimburse eligible city expenditures.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam President.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Um, a few weeks ago, um, I was proud and pleased to stand with members of City Council to pass the resolution that Black Pittsburgh Matters. That stands on three foundations. One, that black lives matter, that we must protect the health and safety of black people in Pittsburgh. Two, black communities matter, that we must rebuild traditional African-American communities in Pittsburgh. And three, black wealth matters. We have to increase employment and entrepreneurship opportunities for black people in the city of Pittsburgh. And today, um, in this moment of history, and I think Mr. Kraus was very eloquent about talking about, um, we have a new generation, this is a new time. And, um, that time is also to suggest that black lives actually matter. And we, as a council, now have a chance to prove it, uh, in Pittsburgh. And that is to protect the health and safety, um, of black people. In the aftermath of the protest over the killing of George Floyd, city leaders across the country are calling to cut law enforcement budgets or re- relocate funds in at least 19 different U.S. cities. Now, defund the police is the phrase you hear, but it means something different to everybody. The common theme involves cutting funding from police department budgets and instead investing in social programs to address the underlying issues like mental health, affordable housing and addiction. In Minneapolis, for example, the Park and Recations Board, the University of Minnesota, public school system and museums and venues have ended their limited relationship with the police department. The Baltimore City Council approved a $22.4 million budget cut for their police department. The Portland City Council cut $15 million from its police budget earlier this month. Five million of that would be put toward a new program that sends unarmed first responders to answer homeless calls. Philadelphia Council to plan $19 million increase for the police budget and shifted 14 million of the police budget elsewhere, including affordable housing. The City Council in Hartford, Connecticut voted to cut or allocate 2 million, uh, reallocate 2 million of its police budget. In Seattle, every department budget is being trimmed by about 10%. Several council members have called for a 50% cut to the police budget. New York City officials imposed a hiring freeze and shifted roughly $1 billion from their police department. Minneapolis City Council members voted on their first curves, trimming more than 1.5 million of departments' nearly 200 million initial budgets for the year. Most of that money will go into Minneapolis Office of Violence Prevention. In Los Angeles, the City Council cut the Los Angeles Police Department by $150 million. In Washington DC, they slashed $15 million from the Metropolitan Police. Berkeley, California, cut their entire police budget by 50%. Other city officials are calling for changes in various cities, including San Francisco, San Diego, Oakland, Milwaukee, Denver, Durham, Winston-Salem, Chicago and many other cities. And so now it is Pittsburgh's time to stand up and say that black lives actually matter. And so the first of the bills that we are going to talk about today takes money from the, um, recruitment budget and puts it into the Stop the Violence Fund. Now, the mayor has already counseled this class, so this does not impact recruitment. He's already counseled this class. But what we are doing is, is making a statement that we believe that money should be put into social service programming. I think there's a misunderstanding. This money will not go necessarily to fund GBI. Rather, is a fund to fund all the, the social service programs, the counseling programs, the homeless programs, the mental health programs. All it does is provide a vehicle, a place to put the money and a venue on which the programs can be decided upon. Then after that recommendation, it must of course come back to council, council approval. So places like, when I talked to Bobby Wilson yesterday, um, programs in Elliott and, um, in, 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 in the North Side, in Bell's Silver, in Knoxville, in Homewood and Hill, um, we all agree that they need social programming. In the past, we have given money over 100 million, you know, 110 million a year to police with very little oversight. We've allowed them to buy with very little oversight, bullets and guns to hurt people. But when it comes time to put money into programming to help people, we have been hesitant. And so now, the other thing is this. Um, many of the advocates who say my bills don't go far enough are calling for a 40% cut in the police budget. I do not support that. Also, it's illegal and not possible. In my, um, research, it's very clear that we are prohibited from firing police. The only reason we can fire them is either through cause or because we can't afford them. We cannot fire them for any other reason. The state made that, put that in our second class charter over in 19, in the 1950s. But what we can do and what we must start to do is have a pause. If we are serious about cutting our police force, the only way you can do it is by not hiring new, um, new candidates. And then by attrition, the police force will be reduced. But this money is simply the first step. It is a, a good faith effort to say that we believe in programming. We're going to take this little bit of money over the next five years, increase it year by year. The programming will be decided by, um, a body that represent, uh, the Mayor's Office, City Council, the Police Department, the Safety Department. And again, those recommendations come back to council for its approval, like every other, um, contract and or budget. It is a, it is a fair process. It is a process that we don't have now. We don't have a fund that says we're going to invest in social services. Up until now, for the most part, we've allowed grant money to do it, outside money to do it. This will be one of the first times that we've actually put city money into providing these programs. And again, the programs are not to fund any, a particular project or any particular area, but for us to be creative and create these new programmings that provide support and reduce the underlying causes of violence and, um, um, of inequity in our city. And so this is the first of many of the bills and I'm hopeful for council to approve it. It's a time for us to stand up in Pittsburgh and say in unison that in this city, black lives indeed matter. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you. Any other members?
Madam President, thank you. Um, Councilman, I'm sorry to be digging into details here. I do agree with, I think, the elements that you just gave in your speech. I don't, I am not clear how they correspond to the bill. Um, so the other cities have been dramatically reducing the police budget. Um, was part of, you listed through the cities that have reduced their police budgets. Uh, but you said something in between there about this reducing this bill specifically reducing the Pittsburgh budget for, you said this money will come from police recruiting. We had a post-agenda and intense discussion and several times about this specific bill, that it does not reduce the police budget at all. Could you please explain that part? Because I feel like you just, there was something different that you just said as opposed to last week.
There's two bills. There are two bills. One will come up under Public Safety. They do two differing things. One establishes the fund and dedicates money to it over the next five years coming from the city budget.
That's the one that says like, based on whatever the police budget is, whether it triples.
That's right.
Or whether it is reduced by half.
That's right.
A ma, uh, it's just a, an indicator of the size of this fund.
That's right.
It does not move money.
It does. That's right. This bill, the mayor has already counseled this class. This class has already been counseled. The mayor, Mayor Pudido has already counseled this recruiting class. So we're shifting that money from the recruiting class that has been counseled as the first fruits into this fund.
So that's new information?
I don't know if it's new. It's been what I've been saying, I thought, all along.
I don't think so. Um, I, I do remember that we, you mentioned last week specifically that you claimed that we cannot actually reduce the police budget because we cannot actually fire officers that are under employee, which isn't exactly the same thing, because not entirely the, the whole police budget is in salaries. But I'll give you that. We can't, we can't slash the salary budget by firing currently employed officers.
Yes.
We all agree on that part. And then, um, but I, I, and I remember you and the, and statements from the Mayor's Office saying that, um, we can certainly reduce our recruiting classes, right? We know that, but that's true. But is there something in either of these two pieces in front of us that actually moves the money from the recruiting budget? Because that's what you just said, that this is being funded out of the recruiting budget. But I don't think that that's a, I don't see that in the language.
Um, I'm pretty sure that's what this triggers. I'm pretty sure that money, the 200 grand, it's what's left over in the recruitment budget that's left over that won't be used this year because the class has been counseled. It takes that money as the first fruit. After that, the money will not come directly, as you said, um, it will come as a percentage of.
From somewhere, from the general fund.
From the general fund as it relates to, so this is simply a good faith effort. Since we've already counseled that, that class, it sees the fund this year with a little bit of.
We have extra in the 2020 budget. That I think is clear, but so, but I just wanted to kind of, you know, again, sorry to hone in on that point because I think it was important to communicate to people that this moving forward is additive.
Well, it doesn't have to be.
It doesn't have to be, but that's all we're not, we're doing right now. And so some people will be happy to see that. A lot of people will not, right? The people who have sent us the thousands of emails are asking us to literally reduce the police budget. And, um, we have taken no action to do that thus far, thus far.
We have, we'll have a choice to do that, right? We, as council, will have a choice to make that hard choice over the next two years, next few weeks and next few years. I, I, what I want to do though is to have that conversation. I'm really interested in, you know, um, the ones that, the advocates have talked to me, they have talked that numbers like 40, 50%, right? Of the police budget they want to reduce. And when I tell them that's really not possible, you know, um, um, they're not pleased with the answer. I think we have to have a conversation, a citywide conversation of what policing is going to look like in the next five, 10 years, right? And, and it's going to take some time to transition to this. I mean, it won't happen overnight, right? There's social workers won't be on the streets next week, next month. We're going to have to, and it's going to be hard. It's going to be a, a hard conversation because it's, it's a, for years, we believed more police officers made our community safer. And it's ingrained in, in us, in fact, um, you know, Darlene Harris was, that was her mantra, right? Um, um, the former mayor, that was his mantra. And now we're, 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 it's time to rethink what our police looks like. And maybe a smaller, nimbler police force is, is the answer. I, as I, as I've said.
What I hear is people talking about filling basic needs, right? And I think we hear a lot about that. And I know that you've talked about that at length, that during the time that I have spent on council, right? And you and Councilman Lavelle have argued and, um, taken dramatic action and focused our entire city on filling the need of basic housing as a basic need, right? And affordable housing. And we could thank you for that. Um, and, but we also have other basic needs. We're all, we're also hearing about the strain that people have on, around food, around childcare, around transportation, certainly jobs. So we know that there are ways that are a broader sense of security, including economic security, right? As well as physical safety, uh, from crime, so that, that we have these things to balance. I think we have that conversation to have moving forward. I also want to refer back that when we discussed this, um, bill, it was during the post agenda and I'm looking at my calendar here. It was the morning of Thursday, um, July 16th. And we have referred people to that post agenda over and over. I think Madam President did a good job giving us the gamut of perspectives from basic police reforms that we've tried before, um, to this kind of stop the violence interventions, embedding social workers and kind of to root causes of feeling basic needs. But, and so I see the structure of this trust fund in that kind of like second position of the Stop the Violence interventions that are putting people on the streets. I think the language of your trust fund does or does not, could you clarify that too? Because I can't read the text file, but.
So let me, let me, let me suggest to you, and I don't want to get into length, but violence prevention covers a multitude of services. It is not, it is not static. Social workers and embedding social workers in police cars can be considered a balance reduction strategy. In the actual, um, we talk a lot about, about the outreach workers, but we don't talk about the linkage to mental health professionals because many of that population also needs counseling, therapy, drug addiction reduction. We don't talk about that. And so, and unfortunately, we've not funded that, that part of the program to its fullest extent. But to actually, as you know, to be able to meet the needs of people who are having issues, multi, many of their issues are, are multiple, right? They are, they are undereducated, um, they may be substance abused, they may have family members that have issues. And so you're going to need more wraparound services in a very direct way. And so that's, that, that's really, um, what this is. And again, it, you need, this money will hopefully be leveraged with other money. We don't, I don't expect this to be the only dollars that we get. I, I'd hope to leverage this through foundation, state, and then again, this, uh, group of experts will recommend to council what new programming will work. And it's in the police, public safety, the Mayor's Office, council will all be part, and county representative. Um, you know. You know, people need jobs too. I mean, there's, there's a variety of things they need. But what this does is it shows that we're willing now to put the money into not just law enforcement, but the actual social needs of coordinating the social needs of these people.
And so after we come back from recess or after we accrue more funding in this bill, then we will be working out through council resolutions kind of how this, these programs or these funds are applied to these programs.
Well, the way I would think is that this, there's a panel that has been meeting monthly for almost a year now called the Stop the Violence Group. It's representative of the police force, of the public safety force, of the county, of the mayor's office. And my, my view is that they would vet these programs and make recommendations. I think it would be an interactive model. I think that if you had districts and communities that needed specific things, you would say, oh, you know, like we talked to Bobby, again, we were talking last night. I think that one of the things we have not a good job, done a good job of is tailoring programs to specific communities. Because what's, what, what the hilltop communities need oftentimes are kind of different than what Carrick may be in terms of voluntary. Very different to what, so that this will be able to kind of.
Do we have that discussion at council to approve?
Yes, they have to come back to council. Absolutely. Positive, 1,000%. They have to come back to council for overall approval.
And then we would have public conversations and the opportunity for more specific public hearings or post agendas with the experts and with the communities in order to say which kinds of programs are needed in which places.
That would be exactly right.
Okay, thank you. I, I feel, I feel a lot better that we've had this kind of clarification. As I said last week, this was moving very fast. I abstained on it last week. So I, I thank you for indulging me for these further details. And we didn't have the post agenda yesterday. Because as I said last week, I, I do feel like we, there are probably lots of citizens. Once they digest this, will have lots of opinions. And that because we've come up on this council recess deadline, I would prefer that we have a few more weeks. But I understand that you would prefer to have the vote today. But it seems that we will, we will have further conversations about these things.
Ongoing conversation.
So I feel a lot more comfortable being supportive today because I, I do feel that it's, while people are wanting the change, we want them to feel included in the change.
Yes.
Because that is, you know, the, we, we certainly don't want anyone to feel even further disempowered, right? And so we just, it's hard to stay in sync with where the public conversation is. So I appreciate this conversation today. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members?
Madam President, if I may please.
Please.
Yeah, thank you. So on Bill 410, I, I have gone back and forth 100 times. I, I've yet to be able to raise my comfort level to voting for today. And even more so confirmed by the conversation that just took place. I think we may be putting the cart before the horse, moving money before we have a clear delineated scope of work that we wish to see the funding accomplish. That in no way implies that I am not supportive of the actions of, of Stop the Violence and the work that has been accomplished. And so I would believe because of the conversation that just took place, my not supporting today will not affect it if it does pass because it will indeed come back to the council for a more detailed discussion and a better understanding of exactly where the funding is to be distributed. And so on that, on 410, I, I have to, I'll be voting no today. And on Bill 512, I only wish to bring my comments of last week's standing committee meeting onto the record here. Though I believe that advancing Bill 512 goes directly against everything that we should safeguard as public officials who are charged withholding the public trust and that the state statute that compels this bill to advance will have lasting negative consequences for employees that want to seek relief from a compromised work environment. And at the recommendation of our city solicitor, I will recuse myself from the vote on Bill 512 today. I will cast positive votes on all remaining bills. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? Councilman Kalkiel.
Yes. Yeah, I agree with Councilman Kraus on 410. I thought yesterday was going to be very important for me to answers to questions that I had in order to have the comfort level to vote on these bills. Just the point that was canceled. At the same time, you know, I think, you know, again, with Councilman Kraus, I believe that we need social service embedded into everything we do moving forward. I also believe it's going to take a lot more money than $250,000. I'm not looking just to take this from the police. Over the period of years, I think we need alternate sources. And I think we need a lot more money. But I do believe in the concept. You know, I hope it can change things. But I also will be voting no on 410. But, but I'm in the spirit of it.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? Okay, seeing none, then I'm going to add mine. I want to thank Reverend Burgess and Councilman Lovell, and I believe Councilman Kraus also sponsored these bills initially. I don't, I don't know which ones or which, but I do want to say that I appreciate that. One thing I noticed with Reverend Burgess is if anybody sends him amendments or sends him concerns, he usually addresses them very well and tries to work through the concerns and issues. I've told him from the very beginning, I, I was not supportive of two of the bills, that there are two bills that I'm very supportive of and two bills that I have some concerns with. And one of the reasons I have concerns with the bills, any of the bills with the funding is because we had, we were supposed to have the post agenda yesterday with the county talking about the social services because they get a billion dollars for social services. We're talking about pennies compared to what they get. And yet we're talking about how we're going to make a change. And I don't think that amount of money is going to make a dent in anything. And, and I heard you mention that you talked to Councilman Wilson and he spoke about a program in Elliot. Well, I represent that area, not Councilman Wilson. So I think that might've been a slip of the tongue there, hopefully. Because I certainly would hope that others would not be having conversations about my district without me being a part of them. But I will say that there's a lot of programs in our area that we'd like to see some funding going towards. But it amazed me how this week alone, we had a, or last week, I'm sorry, on Friday, we had a meeting at the Porters. Everybody knows the Porters, Joey Porter and his wife Chrissy Porter purchased a lot of properties in Sheridan. And they are putting in a tremendous amount of programs. Well, one of the people that came to the program was AHN and Gateway Health in Empower 3. And Gateway is prepared to spend a ton of money in our community, making a difference and doing the things that we need to have done. And I'm wondering why, you know, we should, I think we should be having that conversation with Gateway citywide and seeing how we can get some funding for some of the programs. But I do think that we didn't get the opportunity to talk to the county yesterday about the services. Because if they get that type of money and we're not, still not making a dent in the services that we need, I don't know that this is going to do anything more than take away something from the police department. And in our district, right now, we had five shootings in about a week and a half in Sheridan. And the community is making all these strides, all these changes, all these great things. But yet there's still this violence issue. And there was, I mean, what I heard yesterday was that they were going to finally call one of the groups that we fund in to come in and see if they could help and work with them. But at that point, we had already gotten some information to the police, some things that already happened. And I don't see, I didn't see the money being well spent in my district. I didn't see any interventions. I saw nothing that really affected any kind of change for that area. I think, and it really, and to be quite honest, it was very, very upsetting to a lot of us. But mostly to me because I'm thinking, we're just discussing this funding and I don't even see anybody. Now, I don't know when they get called in. I know that they, somebody said they were getting called in yesterday, but I, what I can tell you is after a week and a half of shootings, almost every night, the residents have had, have really had it with our attempts of what we think is the way to stop violence in the community. And they want to see more police, not less police. They want to know when somebody comes, they're going to respond. They want to see us do more with disruptive properties and making sure we're addressing issues of quality of life for everyday residents. And there's a lot of things that people are saying. I mean, we hear people coming down and comment. And I am so thankful to the people that did come down to comment and did talk to us. I wish that we would still have that meeting. Reverend, I talked to you about bringing everyone together. I would love to have that meeting and talk over the summer on how we can do some of the things you want to do and, and yet make sure that the residents are seeing really what they want. The problem is when we bring the groups together, we're not really hearing from the residents. We all know, we're hearing from organizations, we're hearing from people that are funded. And a lot of cases, we're hearing from people with political agendas, but we're not always hearing from our everyday residents. Now, Councilman Kraus has had that opportunity to go in and meet with a group of residents. And, and I love that, you know, he has a group working together. And we've done that before in the past too. But if, if we're not going to all work collectively like that and realize that each of us have different constituency and each of us have different opinions across our districts, then we're just really hearing from the same organizations and the same people. And I, as much as I appreciate them because their, their voice does matter too. I really wish that we would hear more from the residents of this, of our districts. I really wish that people felt more comfortable. And people, what people told me is they did not feel comfortable coming out and speaking against, for or against anything because there were such strong opinions. So we really don't have a real gauge on what it is, the public that we represent overall, really wants, unless you're out there talking to them as many of us are. So with that said, I'm going to thank Reverend, I think Daniel. I will vote for two of the bills today. I probably will not vote for two of the bills today. I do think that we need further discussion. I think we heard from everybody, but we did not hear from the actual FOP. And that was my fault initially because I had a little bit uncomfortableness about having, having the FOP come out. And then we found somebody who actually worked with the activists and did some programming, who offered to come and talk because he actually had, has an open mind and would like to see positive change. But then we, I received a call yesterday from the activist, asking, from an activist, asking that we postpone the meeting because there was hearings going on where several people were involved. There was all sorts of reasoning, but they really wanted to bring different people to the table. And so with that said, we never got to hear from the FOP and we really never got to have the discussions that we really wanted to have. Councilwoman Gross.
I apologize. I know this is a long agenda and, and we're having a lot of discussion about these bills. Thank you. Two, two things. I mean, the, that Councilman Burgess disassured us, and I also reread the text file of the structure of the trust fund. It does say that the, any allocations would have to come to a vote of council, if I'm reading that correctly, Councilman.
Yes.
And so I think, I don't, I'm not saying that you'll be 100% comfortable with this, Councilwoman, but that we heard public concern about there being a kind of some out of sight committee that would be not visible or transparent, making these allocations was a source of concern. To the extent I think that we can guarantee that, that we have these conversations in public, that there are council votes on any of the programming, I think is what, what people need to hear, what council members need to hear and what our individual neighborhoods need to hear. Because they do have ideas, they have needs, they have unfulfilled goals, right? They, 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 and they don't all have to be the cookie cutter saying. And I think that's really important here. I also want to take a little bit of time to revisit Bill 0556 or just have a word on that. That's the VA facility in Councilman Burgess's district, the one that is being restricted for public safety training. And we talked about it last week at Standing Committee. I had a bunch of questions that were clarified. But I, I want to reiterate the, the tension here in this decision is, you know, really for us to be purchasing even for a dollar, 200 acres to, or 165 acres, I can't remember exactly the acreage, to be committed to public safety training, I think is not what a lot of people in Pittsburgh want to hear right now. And that there being such a, they're initially such a giant capital budget envisioned for that site, something like in my recollection, 60, 70 million dollars. But that we heard last week is that the option is just to say like, no, thank you. And then it goes to the speculative real estate market. And that's a downside because we are hearing a lot from the public now about how gentrification is part of the formula that is part of systemic racism that they want our city council to stop doing. So, you know, so we should obtain the site. But there is an, hopefully, future options in that we can appeal, if I'm recalling correctly, to the General Services Administration of the federal government. If as moving forward, we envision an alternative use for a portion of that acreage. Thank you, Councilman Burgess, for nodding yes because it was, it was a complex conversation. And that's why I want to kind of reiterate it for the public. So that to say like, I'm willing to vote yes today. You know, I, I wish that it could be different, but this is the way we understand it now. But we do have, there is, there are some options at least that we can pursue. We can't guarantee that we could have alternative uses for at least part of the site. And we can certainly, in moving, in forward conversations at council, you know, well, we will have an opportunity to decide how much capital investment we are willing or are not willing to put in into which kinds of public safety training, right? Certainly there, there are, there are facilities that are down in the flood plain in Washington Boulevard where people have died in floods. If, if the public, if you're not, weren't with us 10 years ago or so, you might not know that, that really need to be removed. And we will be removing them to the site. So there's a kind of a deep history in that conversation. And so I will be voting yes on it today, but I just wanted to, to reiterate those comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson? Your mic is on or off?
Yes, Madam President, thanks. Rest assured, we weren't talking about Elliot. I was.
I was coming out of the north side, let me tell you.
Yeah. So we were, you know, I was calling about the Stop the Violence Fund and, you know, the future and what that looks like. And, you know, the conversation here has led to every allocation will be authorized by council and will come for, you know, for a vote discussion, et cetera. So that, that, you know, those opportunities, you know, I don't want to be at that table in the future to not really have a deep understanding of what the impact these groups can make. And I'm trying to make my best effort to involve them in the conversation I'm having. Trying to, just like maybe, I might, I may be over speaking here, but like Councilman Kraus, so, you know, I already have some task force that, like a core unit that we've been forming of neighbors and different entities in one area, specifically right now, one area that has been problematic on a lot of different levels on all sides. And to come to some resolution, I see no way forward other than to understand all the resources that are available to solve some of these problems. So I really appreciate our conversation with Councilman Kraus. And so, yeah, rest assured, Madam President, I'm not, not talking about Elliot. I did, I did have my, I do like, I do love that overlook, but we weren't talking about Elliot.
Thank you. Okay, any other members?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Kalkiel.
I will say, Bobby, I stepped foot in Teresa's district once before and I'll never do it again, so. All right. But, but on the VA side, you know, I, I do think it's, and I don't know who to talk to about this, I guess. But as far as our training goes, when it comes to that point, again, I'll reiterate what I said last week. I don't want to be training recruits to go to suburbs. And I want to work something out where if we're paying $10,000 per person to train, that we get that back if they go through our training and they have to, and they decide to go to Bethel Park to work as a police officer there, we need that money back. Or we need a commitment out of them as to how many years that they put in with the Pittsburgh police. Otherwise, I mean, and I've seen it, and Madam President, you were with me at the FOP when we saw the alarming rate of officers that were losing to suburbs because we're training them. And it's, we have great training and I really think the facility will be a fantastic place. I just think we need to get reins on that and whether, and are we going to open it up to, you know, suburbs to have their people come in and train them specifically? So I have some questions about that. I'll be supportive of it today, but I really think it's a problem we need to address moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? Thank you. Any other members? I'm just going to say about the site in the celebrity that it can also be used for beyond, it could be used for some of the social service programs that Reverend's discussing today. And I really do want to work with Reverend on, and Councilman Leval and everyone, on getting a program up and running that benefits the city of Pittsburgh in terms of social services. But I do think that we need to hold, have some conversations with the county in regards to what they're doing in the city. And when the last time they did a needs assessment for the city of Pittsburgh to make sure that those billions of dollars are coming into the city of Pittsburgh for preventive programs that we actually need to see here. That's it. Okay. Okay, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, I, whatever the name is called, those, pose a vote no. Clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
I abstain on Bill 0512. I on all of those.
Mr. Coghill.
No on Bill 410. I on all others.
Ms. Grant.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, I will vote no on Bill 410. My comments remain, I recuse myself from the vote, which I believe is the actually correct choice that needs to be made on Bill 512. I will recuse myself from the vote and I will register I vote on all remaining bills. Thank you.
Mr. Leval. Mr. O'Connor.
I recuse on 512. I on all of those.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
I on all bills except no on Bill 410.
On Bill 410, we have I six, no's three. On Bill 512, we have two recuse, one extension, and six ayes.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Onto Councilman Corey O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill number 590, reported to the Committee on Public Safety Services for July 22, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 404, ordinance supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title II Fiscal Article Five Special Funds to add a new chapter to 37 Stop the Violence Fund to prioritize the prevention of violence and crime within communities and to create a budgetary obligation for the fund. Bill number 405, ordinance supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title I, Administrative Article Three Organization, Chapter 116, Department of Public Safety to add a new subsection 11602A, duty to intervene by requiring sworn and uns sworn police employees and officers to stop or attempt to stop another employee or officer from applying inappropriate force or knowingly depriving any person of any constitutionally or statutorily guaranteed right. Bill number 406, ordinance supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title I, Administrative Article One, General Provisions, Chapter 103, official standards by adding a new subsection 10306, provision on acquisition of military equipment or referantry. Bill number 487, ordinance amendment and supplement to Pittsburgh Code, Title I Administrative Article Three Organization, Chapter 116, Department of Public Safety by adding a new subsection 11614, chokehold prohibition. Bill number 576, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety on behalf of the city to enter into an access agreement with Pittsburgh Zoo and PPG Aquarium for purposes of a drive-in movie presentation. Bill number 577, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of public safety to enter into an access agreement with the Cosman Development Company for purposes of a drive-in movie presentation. Bill number 578, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of public safety to enter into an access agreement with the Community College of Allegheny County for purposes of a drive-in movie presentation. Bill number 587, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to execute relevant grant agreements to receive funding from Allegheny County Health Department to develop a public health informed diversion program and further providing for expenditures under the term of the said agreement not to exceed $186,512.16.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam President.
Reverend Burgess.
I want to use this moment to say thank you. I want to thank you, I want to say thank you to Public Safety Director Hisrich, to Chief Schubert. I want to say thank you to the mayor, the Wadudo, Chief Staff Gilman, and to our solicitor and the law department who have all worked, and for you, Madam President, who have all worked with me on these bills. And we have gotten, I believe, a cross section of comments. We've gotten to where everybody is comfortable. And this is, I think, a great step forward in our city that we're standing up and making this bold statement that black lives do matter in the city. And so I just want to thank everyone for our participation. And as I'm sure Councilwoman Strasburger would tell you, as we talked yesterday, this is not the end. This is the beginning of a long conversation of many actions to come that we work together to, and I think that Mr. Kraus was right today, that we lend, we end discrimination in all forms, whether it be the LGBT community, whether it be discrimination against women, whether it be discrimination against African Americans or any other oppressed group of people or minorities. And so together we move forward and this is a great day for our city. I just want to thank everybody, everybody, and giving me the opportunity to work with you and to come up with these compromise bills that we could all support and agree with. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reverend. Do we have other members?
Madam President, may I?
Yes, please, Councilman Kraus.
Yeah, thank you very much. I won't repeat my comments on 404. I've made those public already. 405, absolutely 100% without wavering, support duty to intervene. I remember watching the video of what I believe to be the murder of George Floyd and I just sat there in complete shock and disbelief that one of the three officers that were standing there did not intervene and say, for God's sake, you're going to kill this man. And how much different the world might have been had that happened. And perhaps there is a silver lining to this terrible, terrible travesty in that it brought to light some serious deficiency in how we police and what we should be doing to require of our police and our policing system. So without, without second thought, absolutely the support duty to intervene. I cannot bring myself to a level of comfort to talk about reducing weaponry. I, you know, when I came onto the council, I know many, you know, so many members have shifted, but that first five, six years, my, everything that I did in work was about reducing gun violence. And we fought it in every way that we possibly could. And I remember the opposition and how rabid the opposition was. I remember the public hearing that we held down in the foyer of the city county building on the gun bills that Councilwoman Strasburger and Councilman O'Connor put forward and the rabid opposition to any, any sensible, I don't want to use the word restriction, but any sensible gun ownership legislation. And so my, I keep coming back to these thoughts of a citizenry that outguns our police departments and our constituencies and can't justify the limitation. However, and this is a big one, I will stand on my head to discuss and create sound policy as to when those weapons can be deployed and what constitutes the right and proper situation by which some of this artillery is deployed. And I think that's really the heart of the conversation. And so with that, I have to, I have to vote no on 406, but 487, absolutely. There, not a question in my mind, no reservation at all whatsoever, that any time a police officer would use a person's neck, airwaves, carotid artery to subdue a suspect for any reason, cannot be part of our policing and how we police people. And so I will absolutely be voting in favor of 487 and again then in the remainder of the bills under public safety. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? Any other members? Seeing that, I'm just going to say the same thing that basically that I can, I'm definitely going to vote for 487, the chokeholds and Bill 405, the duty to intervene. And I want to thank Reverend and Daniel and the administration, everyone who worked together on these bills. And I really do want to thank the public for coming out and speaking, even though we didn't hear from everyone. We did hear from people who were knowledgeable in some of these issues. And honestly, what they've asked us to do is to put all the bills, to recommit all the bills and wait until we had some further discussion. And so there's some places where I think that we need to have some discussion and that's the one with the military, the demilitarization and the funding. Those are the two things I think that we have concerns with only because I'd like to hear more from the, from the public and people who know better. But I do think that a lot of times people see these bills and hear Reverend Burgess and they don't realize how many times that he is sometimes also, not only is he trying to get results for the community, but he also sometimes is trying to get results good for the city. And a lot of times we don't give him credit for, everybody thinks that it's a lightning rod when he puts legislation on sometimes, but sometimes they don't realize that he's softening the blow of what could be. And so I think this is one of those cases where he sees something needs done, but he's going to make sure that he leads in a way that we get things done that they're productive and helpful for all parties. And as I mentioned, we have not heard from the FOP or from police officers who are on the street. Although we heard from the chief and the director and the command staff, I think that they've been very helpful and very knowledgeable. I don't know how any of us who are not on the streets, not one of us is going to go out tomorrow with a gun or a badge, not one of us is going to be faced with a gun and not one of us understands the job of a Pittsburgh police officer enough to really make these kinds of decisions without hearing from them in terms of the military style weapons. They were the weapons, they are some of the tools that they used to stop the Tree of Life massacre. They are some of the weapons that they used to stop the shooting when our three officers were shot and killed, one including Guy Kelly who was raised in my district. And I saw the pain in his mother's face every day and I think, and you see the shoulders and their pain every day. There's just been people that we've seen that have been faces. Now, I do think that there needs to be a policy because I do think that there's an excessive use of some of the equipment. But I also think that they're being more cautious in trying to make sure that they are putting into place some cautious. But the reason they use those are because of the, the reason they use the SWAT truck or things like that or because there were reasons. It wasn't like they just decided, okay, we're going to overuse this in the community. There were, it was a domestic call that ended up with three officers being shot. And so, you know, I just think that we, unless we're willing to sit there and learn and do the job of the officers, then we should be sitting down talking to them before we do this kind of stuff. And hearing from the command staff and the director and the chief, that's wonderful. But they also have a different role than the people that are on the street, know that. They're working with the administration, their job is to make sure that the administrations, their goal was also met and, and at the same time, the safety of the public. So there's a combination of things happening with them. With the rank and file on the street, their job is to go into, onto the calls late at night, early in the morning, into bad situations, into, into good situations. I mean, sometimes there are also vehicles that save people in a lot of ways, not just, or intimidating. And I do think we need a policy and I hope that we look towards that. But I, other than that, unless I'm willing to go and get on the street myself, I'm not comfortable in making those decisions. So that's it for me. Any other members?
Madam President, I just wanted to see if I can, clarification on 404. I think it was the first bill read, was that?
Could you just repeat the bill number again?
404.
404, okay.
What was the, can we read that again? I apologize, I don't have an agenda for me today.
It's hard to do these meetings like this. I have all these phones open and laptops. I still don't have everything. Madam Clerk, could you read that bill 404 again?
Bill 404, ordinance supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title II Fiscal Article Five Special Funds to add a new chapter, Chapter 237, Stop the Violence Fund to prioritize the prevention of violence and crime within communities and to create a budgetary obligation for the fund.
Okay, so this is setting up the account. Okay, good enough. Thank you.
Madam President, may I?
Yes, Councilman Kraus.
Yeah, so, you know, Councilman, or Coghill, whoever you are, thank you. Yeah, you know what? I didn't read that correctly. And my concern previously is about shifting money, especially at a time when we simply just don't know the impact of COVID, what it has done to the budget. I had the pleasure of speaking with the mayor at length the other night. It doesn't appear to be as dire as what I thought it was at first, but things are fluid and could change in a moment's notice. So I will vote in favor of 404 to create the obligation. And then there's plenty of time to have the discussion afterwards. And I just, not quite there with the comfort level of actually moving money before we create the fund. So I will vote in favor of that. And then in, I'd like to further my comments on this militarization of police officers. I don't want my comments to, to lead anyone to believe that the mindset of a militarized police department for any city would be in the best interest of constituency. Several years ago, when police officers were lobbying to be able to live outside the city, Councilman Burgess and I were called to be part of that arbitrator process. And something I learned from the councilman, which it rings true today and I never forgot, if you, if we permit police officers to live outside the city as an example, it is very easy to create occupying forces that don't have clear connection to community, which is one of the things that we have been discussing on our Monday and Thursday meetings with Hilltop Leadership, is this idea of returning to the time when officers actually knew people and how to recreate that. And part of it, we believe, a solution to that is that when a new class comes on and 10 officers, let's say as an example, are given over to the Zone 3, that there is an obligation within policy of the department that those officers go around and introduce themselves in very formalized processes to community leadership and to community organization, that there is a clear understanding of the neighborhoods that they will be protecting and serving as opposed to policing, which has been a very, very important realization in the conversations that we have been having. So the idea of a mindset of a militarized police department makes me extremely uncomfortable. And I don't, I really want, not really, I do lean heavily on the protect and serve as opposed to policing. So weaponry and attitude are two completely different arguments in this bill. My concern is solely around the firepower and our constituency and police officers being outgunned. God, I hate to say that. But it's a situation that we have not created. I believe that has been created by far-right misinterpretation of second. I believe that has been created by far-right misinterpretation of Second Amendment. But those guns are on the streets. And if I have my data correct, I believe there's a firearm on the streets for every man, woman, and child in the United States. Thank you for letting me clarify.
Thank you, Councilman. I think it's pretty much the same for all of us. Any other members? The bills are not ready for final action?
And Councilman Wilson has his hand up.
Oh, I apologize. Councilman Wilson?
Yes, thank you. At standing committee, at standing committee last Wednesday, I thought we did air out some of the concern over whether or not this bans, you know, the vehicle that was used in the Tree of Life, you know, in that horrific incident to actually save, you know, to protect officers. Is that? I mean, I had my clarification then, and I was, you know, good on it. So can anyone, Councilman Burgess?
Madam President?
Please, Councilman.
Yes, we, in long conversations with the Public Safety Director Hithrich, with Chief Schubert, the reason that the bill was amended, none of the equipment that we need to respond to things like the Tree of Life are banned under this legislation, right? And so we have a process that, and then on top of that, even though we are saying they cannot regularly buy things, they can still come to council for very specific things. Let's say something is prohibited on this list, but they really need it. They can come back to council, and council can approve it above this ordinance. So there is nothing that prohibits the police, and that's why they have come to, you know, support it. We work with them. So though the beer is not prohibited, nor is the armament that they need to be safe. We were very careful in that. It's really, what you don't want them to have is, you know, rocket helicopters and tanks and those sort of surplus military equipment that was designed for military use that really has no place on the streets of our city. And again, so, yeah, and so it's, yeah. We have a process that, again, the police, the police themselves are supportive of this. And that we also have, if something happens in the future where they needed equipment that we are, that this bill covers, they can still come back to council. We can have that conversation and give them authorization.
Well, thank you for clarifying that and revisiting that for me. There was just a comment, I just wanted to make sure of that because this bill is important to me. I'm in support. And, but I also, at the same time, realize in this time, you know, in this time, that, you know, there are these situations, these horrific events. And so thank you for clarifying that. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other members? So I'm just going to say that, yes, I understand that it was amended. I did talk to Reverend yesterday. I still have concerns. I don't think council members or police officers. I don't think that, I hate to see any politician deciding what our health or our public safety should be. To be honest, I wish there was some independent bodies that ran them instead of the elected officials because it does become political. With that said, I'm just going to vote no on that bill today. So the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor, the passage of, but either name is called, those opposed will vote no. Please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess?
Mr. Coghill?
No on 406, and I on all.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Madam Clerk, no on 406. I on all remaining bills. Thank you.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
No on Bill 406. I on the remainder of the bills.
On Bill 406, we have I six, noes three. On Bill 404, we have I's eight, noes one. All other bills are I's nine, noes zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Councilman Coghill, Committee on Public Works?
Madam President?
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 591, Report of the Committee on Public Works for July 22, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 503, Resolution Granting Under Crafton Borough, Their successors and assign the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense an 18-foot stormwater sewer line and in-wall with stormwater outfall into Shartier's Creek at the intersection of Shartier's Avenue and Sycamore Street in the 28th Ward, Second Council District. Bill Number 527, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to execute relevant agreements with Carry All Products Inc. to process source-separated glass at no cost and further for this stated purpose to reach zero waste goal by 2030. All materials will be hauled by the Bureau of Environmental Services for multiple recycling drop-off locations. Bill Number 528, Resolution Providing for an Amendment Reimbursement Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the construction phase of the Allegheny Circle Phase Two Construction Project and providing for the payment of municipal incurred costs not to exceed $2,086,495 and the municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed $8,000. Bill Number 529, Resolution Providing for an amended reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary engineering phase of the Smithfield Street Reconstruction Project and providing for the payment of municipal incurred costs thereof not to exceed $800,000 and the previously authorized municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed $5,000. Bill Number 530, Resolution Providing for an amended reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the preliminary engineering phase of the Swine Bridge Reconstruction Project and providing for the payment of municipal incurred costs not to exceed $1,020,000 and the previously authorized municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed $1,500. Bill Number 532, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with Most Site Construction Company, the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, and/or the Federal Highway Administration for work settlement and/or final completion and acceptance of the Greenfield Bridge Replacement Project. Bill Number 557, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a settlement agreement and release between the city and of Pittsburgh, and Judith B. Osland, Sharon S. Hadley, Charles Laura, and Shania Kaiser, Alex Machipo, McCaughy, Anna Zem, Shoe Shirts Landscaping, I'm sorry, and Regis Day, Regis J. Shawshirts, for the purpose of settlement of the city's claims against the aforementioned parties as a result of a retaining wall failure and subsequent landslide into Frick Park and further authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to enter into a right-of-entry license agreement to allow temporary access into Frick Park for repair work on city-owned and non-city property and installation of a retaining wall on non-city property and a separate agreement as needed for the city to own a portion of a GeoGrid mesh to stabilize designated hillside in Frick Park. Bill Number 565, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the city to enter into temporary construction easements, temporary trail easements and permanent trail easements in lieu of imminent domain with the owners of certain properties in the Sixth Ward, 14739th Street for multi-modular trail work and related to public mobility. Bill Number 572, Resolution Granting Under Seen Properties LLC, Their successors and assign the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new set of entrance steps at 1900 St. Ives Street in the 21st Ward, Sixth Council District. Bill Number 573, Resolution Granting Under Charles and Anne Hale, Their successors and assign the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install a new front porch at 204 Kramer Way in the 19th Ward, Second Council District. Bill Number 574, Resolution Granting Under Beth Rogers, Their successors and assign the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install a new deck with an accessible wheelchair ramp at 402 Knox Avenue, 18th Ward, Third Council District.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor, the passage of, but either name is called, those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Excuse me, Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
I's nine, noes zero.
Bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Councilman Kraus, Committee on Human Resources?
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 592, Report of the Committee on Human Resources for July 22, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 541, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 773 of 2017, which authorized the city to enter into a professional services agreement with O'Brien Ruleless and Bochicchio LLC for the purpose of providing legal services in connection with the defense of certain workers' compensation matters and claims brought against the city by increasing the cost by $600,000 for two additional years for services and by updating the firm's name. Bill Number 542, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 484, which authorized the city to enter into a professional services agreement with corporate cost control for third-party administration of the city's liabilities under the Pennsylvania Unemployment Compensation Act by increasing the authorized spend by $10,400 for two additional years of service.
Thank you. Heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor, but either name is called, those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Excuse me, Ms. Strasburger?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
I's nine, noes zero.
Bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 593, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for July 22, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 492, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with community-based organizations for community and economic development or planning assistance with various neighborhoods in the city and providing operating support for these groups and provide for the payment at a cost not to exceed $500,000. Bill Number 550, Resolution, Further Amending Resolution Number 863, by increasing the housing opportunity persons with AIDS line item by $165,945 and Emergency Solution Grant line item by $6,452,349 to reflect the allocation of Federal Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act funding. Bill Number 551, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 600, by increasing the not-to-exceed amount for an Emergency Solution Grant line item agreement by $6,452,349 to $7,632,975,000 to reflect the allocation of Federal Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act funding. Bill Number 552, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 555, which provided for an agreement with the Jewish Healthcare Foundation to provide administration and operating expenses, housing and housing-related supportive services by increasing the not-to-exceed amount for a housing opportunities for person with AIDS line item agreement by $165,945 to $1,237,919 to reflect the allocation of Federal Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act funding. Bill Number 553, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of City Planning to enter into a professional services agreement with E. Holdings Inc. prepare a feasibility study for the reconceptualization and reinstallation of the Cantini Mosaic at a cost not to exceed $25,000. Bill Number 554, Resolution lifting the demolition moratorium in the areas compromised by the boundaries identified in the Mexican War Streets Expansion National Register nomination of 2008 imposed pursuant to Resolution 468 of 2013. Bill Number 579, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 277, which provided an agreement with various community organizations for operational administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment, and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities so as to reprogram funds within city council from Bridge Committee, $5,000, to North Side Leadership Conference Bridge Committee, $5,000, and Mount Washington CDC Quality of Life Committee, to Elliott West End Athletic Association, by amending city council, City BG unspecified local option line items for corrections of the JVE Edwards numbers and authorizing a subsequent agreement for operation administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment, and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents of the city.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam President, briefly?
Yes, Councilman.
I'm going to talk in a frame of mind today. On Bill 492, just want to take a moment to thank Councilman Wilson and all members that were so active over the last couple of days on numerous phone calls. And they recognized the leadership of you, Madam President, in helping us to come to a decision that all members are comfortable with. It was a good exercise in relationship building, and I'm glad we went through it, and I think we're all the better for it. So thank you all for your help.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members?
Councilwoman?
Yes, Councilman Gross?
Thank you. I also appreciate all the many different conversations with council members to come to this resolution. But I want to add that I think it is done and that we are recognizing so much need throughout the city, of course, both because of the pandemic, because of the many, many years of austerity, the many, many years of disinvestment in communities, that we, I think, need to expand our thinking in about how we use these flexible federal funds that are based in the Community Development Block grant transfers that we get. We wish that it had kept up with, you know, allocations formulas from the 1980s. We would be getting something like $80 million from the federal government if the program had not been defended by the federal government. And we're getting a mere $12 million. These funds are meant to be flexible. They are meant to be allocated by city councils to fill community needs. And so I think we need to continue to think about the $12 million that we got from the federal government this year and next year. There was a time when I first got into council where these funds were mostly allocated towards infrastructure and because we had such a small capital budget because we'd been unable to borrow from the bond market for some 10 or 15 years. That is no longer true. This council has approved lots of bond issuances in recent years. And we have, I'm going to say, you know, kind of back of the envelope penciling about $100 million sitting in the bank. Sure, allocated because of the bond underwriting for which we approved. But that there is this, if not this time, when? Should we be allocating more of these funds that are meant to fund community needs? We should be talking more explicitly about what are the most critical needs that we need to fill. People are lining up still for food distributions. The federal government is about to, we hope, not cut off for food distributions. The federal government is about to, we hope not, cut off the $600 a month that people are getting for their unemployment checks. So, these are flexible funds. They're meant to be flexible funds and I hope that as when we come back after recess that we not only help Councilman Wilson fill some of those needs in his district, but we really, I think, have a public conversation about, you know, where there are these very flexible funds that are sitting in our capital budget, which means we can revote and revisit the allocation of those funds where they might be needed now. Thank you. That's all I'm supportive of today. I appreciate everybody's work on this.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else? So, I'm going to thank Councilman, anyone else?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to thank Councilman Kraus for his comments and I agree, it's a good exercise to end on going into the recess. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and then I want to thank Councilman Lavelle and Councilman Burgess, who initially talked about this with myself and I asked that they'd reach out to Councilwoman Gross and then I understand Councilman Wilson had some concerns and it ended last night with Councilman Kraus helping to work through some of this stuff too. So, it was really, and I can tell you yesterday alone, I had 68 phone calls between these bills, I wrote it down because I counted them, between these bills and the.
Police.
Police reform bills, yeah, and just everything happening in general with the post-agenda. It was 68 phone calls and a good many of them were from council members going back and forth in the administration, trying to make sure that we were all, you know, working through whatever concerns we had. And I just want to thank everyone for working on this and Councilman Wilson, this is one of the, a big project that you took on, but Councilman Gross and I have been talking about this for years, that we have concerns about this act of funding and the way it's done. And, you know, we tried to change it this year and it ended up the same way. So, I said I'd love to see this go towards one big project instead of a lot of pet projects that really doesn't, it really doesn't yield any real results for the community as a whole, but I would love, for the city as a whole, I would love to see us use this for building some of those organizations that this is supposed to go for funding, is supposed to help build capacity for nonprofits, but what it does is go to the nonprofit that has capacity because they have the capacity to do a presentation where the nonprofit that needs capacity building, they don't have the capacity to do the presentation. So, it's almost, it's a catch-22 and, you know, we almost punish them because they don't have the capacity instead of rewarding them and helping them to build that. So, I would like to see it go towards, if we're talking about funding different groups that help with anti-violence, I mean, $500,000 would go a long way, a lot more than the $250,000 we just put in. So, I would like to see us do something like that, something really significant to really help prevent violence in the city of Pittsburgh. And to me, that makes us a more livable city than seeing some development thrown up on the corner here and there. That said, any other members? Okay.
Just very, very briefly, I just, I couldn't agree, Councilwoman Gross is smiling. I couldn't agree anymore with the conversation that we're having around these funds. I only wish to caution that, you know, my, so much of my role in this was to protect Hilltop Alliance and the service area that they provide, which is staggering in the terms of need. And I don't want to be a part of anything that hurts the capacity of an organization like Hilltop Alliance. If this funding went away for them, they would fold. It would just be that simple. So, just caution the discussion, but more than happy to participate in it. Thank you.
I would love to have that discussion. I think that if organizations are depending on public dollars, they need to do better in doing their own fundraising. That's all I'm going to say. The bills haven't received, or I'm sorry, the bills are now ready for final passage. Those in favor of the, either name is called, those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Coghill.
Hi.
Ms. Gross.
Hi.
Mr. Kraus.
Hi.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor.
Hi.
Ms. Strasburger.
Hi.
Mr. Wilson.
Hi.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Hi.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Councilwoman Strasburger, Committee on Innovation Performance and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Strasburger presents Bill number 594, reported to the Committee on Innovation Performance and Asset Management for July 22nd, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 547, resolution, amending resolution number 569, which authorized the city to extend a professional services agreement with STR Grants LLC for software services relating to the E Properties Plus Profiling System by a term of one additional year at a cost not to exceed $33,548.89. Bill number 548, resolution authorizing the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a data sharing agreement to access certain data from the I-95 Corridor Correlation Traffic Flow Data Program. Bill number 549, resolution authorizing the Director and the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a data sharing agreement to access certain online services, including the Waze Connected Citizens Program Data Upload Tools and the Waze Traffic Data API. Bill number 559, Witness Providing for the General Acceptance and Authorization by the City of Electronic Signatures Pursuant to the Electronic Transaction Act 73 by Amending the City of Pittsburgh Code of Witnesses at Title I Administrative Article VII Procedures to Include New Chapter 172 Electronic Signatures.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill 559. It's really technical in nature. I should have done it, I should have offered it last Wednesday and then the flurry of bills and activity, I missed that. So, really, all it does, and you should have copies of it with the newest agenda, but all it does is change the chapter number from 172 to 169A, where this language will live. And this is regarding e-signature legislation, allowing for e-signatures to be able to be used in lieu of physical signatures on city documents. So, again, technical in nature. So, motion.
Okay, you have a motion?
Motion to amend.
Any discussion?
I'll just, Madam President, I'll just also say, I want to thank Mike Strellick in the Council Budget Office for his eagle eyes finding this and identifying that the chapter already existed, so we needed a new chapter.
Thank you to Mike. Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And the opposed? Bills amended. Okay, and now the passage of all the bills. Is there any discussion on all the bills? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the, either name is called, those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Coghill.
Hi.
Ms. Gross.
Hi.
Mr. Kraus.
Hi.
Mr. Lavelle.
Hi.
Mr. O'Connor.
Hi.
Ms. Strasburger.
Hi.
Mr. Wilson.
Hi.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Hi.
Eyes nine, nose zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. It's finally passed. And that moves us on to motions and resolutions and I have one meeting, I have meeting announcements.
We have one more committee, Council President.
One more committee.
Yeah, Councilwoman Gross, Committee.
I'm sorry, I got that. I apologize, Councilwoman Gross. Councilwoman Gross, meeting on Governmental Affairs.
Madam President, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number 595, reported to the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for July 22nd, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 109, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the town homes on Fifth Avenue, 5127, 5129, 5131, 33 and 5135 Fifth Avenue. Bill number 141, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the 2926 Smallman Street Land Development Project located at 2920 and 2930 Smallman Street. Bill number 362, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for Duncan Street Town Homes at 35, 5308 through 5314 Duncan Street. Bill number 363, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for 52nd Street Town Homes at 724 and 728 52nd Street. Bill number 364, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for 39th Street Homes at 204, 206 and 208 39th Street. Bill number 438, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the Pittsburgh Distilling Company, 2401 Smallman Street. Bill number 533, resolution authorizing the mayor as chief elected official for the city to enter into, one, a chief elected official and local workforce development partnership agreement, and, two, a chief elected official and fiscal agent agreement with Three Rivers Workforce Investment Board, Inc., and the chief elected official of Allegheny County, Rich Fitzgerald. Bill number 534, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Finance and the Department of Public Works to execute as necessary instruments for the Declaration of Restrictions and Covenant in favor of the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority to permit the installation of green infrastructure at the Bob O'Connor Golf Course Clubhouse in Shinley Park, as funded by the Alcasan Grove Grant Award to the city, and further authorizing the mayor and director of Public Works and Department of Finance to enter into any other necessary agreements between the city and Alcasan necessary to implement the Grove Grant projects for the benefit of the public. Bill number 535, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into a contribution and corporation agreement with the PWSA for certain utility relocation and other work elements in connection with the Allegheny Circle Two-Way Conversion Project. Bill number 536, resolution providing for the execution of a corporation agreement with the URA for the performance of certain work in connection with the 2020-2021 Community Development Block Grant Program and providing for payment of costs not to exceed $4,316,800, Council District of. Bill number 537, resolution approving execution of a contract for disposition by sale of land between the URA, the Housing Authority of the City for the sale of various lots and blocks in the Third and Fifth Wards of the City, Council District Number Six. Bill number 538, resolution authorizing a corporation agreement with the URA designating the URA as the city's agent for administration of the 2020-2021 Home Investment Partnership Program, Council District of. Bill number 539, resolution authorizing the URA to acquire all the city's right, title and interest, if any, in and to the publicly owned properties in the 12th Ward of the city designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County, located at the north side of Kelly Street, between Fifth Avenue on the west and the railroad right away on the east, and south side of Frankstown Avenue, also between Fifth Avenue on the west and the railroad right away on the east, Council District Number Nine. Bill number 540, resolution authorizing the URA to acquire all the city's rights and interests, if any, into the publicly owned properties in the 12th Ward of the city designated in the D Registry Office of Allegheny County, located at 608 Regis Way, 119 Shetland Street and Shetland Street immediately north and south of Regis Way, 600 602, 604, 1612, 16 and 618, Larama Avenue and Larama Avenue between Joseph Street and Shetland Street, 6300, 6302 and 6304 Joseph Street and Joseph Street south of Regis Way and 65312 Rapidway and Rapidway south of Regis Way, Council District Number Nine. Bill number 588, resolution, amending resolution 153 to clarify the parties that will be entering into corporation agreements relating to the shared operation and administration of the City of Pittsburgh Child Care Quality Fund.
Wow. Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam President, could I just briefly?
Yes, please.
Madam Clerk, I think when Bill 588 was read into committee, I asked if I could please be added as a sponsor of the bill or a cosponsor at this point of the bill, along with council members Strasburger, Kell Smith and Gross. Thank you.
So noted.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And? Any further discussion from any other members? None? Councilwoman Gross, okay.
Thank you. It's been a very long agenda, but, you know, we made some comments yesterday about the importance of childcare and I appreciate the administration sending people over to talk about how they were re, hopefully partnering and changing the co-op agreement for this childcare funding and we look forward to seeing it come to fruition and help in this time of need, but I appreciate everybody's support.
Thank you. Okay, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the, either name is called, those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Coghill.
Hi.
Ms. Gross.
Hi.
Mr. Kraus.
Hi.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Hi.
Mr. Wilson.
Hi.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Hi.
Eyes eight, nose zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to motions and resolutions and I have a meeting announcement. Council's recess begins tomorrow, Wednesday, July 29th and will end Thursday, August 20th. There will be no meetings tomorrow. Council's regular meeting, council's next regular legislative meeting is Friday, August 21st at 10:00 a.m. Is there anything for members? Nothing? Well, I'm just going to thank everyone for working together on a lot of really, really important bills and really being very cordial and working through some of the concerns that we had. I want to thank you all because I know that there's, you know, everyone's passionate about different parts of these bills and different things that we've worked on. And I'm just, I know sometimes we get a lot of tension between us or things happen, but it's because of our passion and because of the things that we really believe in. And I just want to thank you all because I think through that all, we did a really good job in getting some of this stuff done. And as I mentioned, I'm still willing to work on the, I'd love to work on the bills, the demilitarization bills, and I'd love to work on the funding bills in terms of the police reform bills. I love to work with council members, you know, and Councilman Lavelle, Councilman Burgess, but all members, but also with the administration and the police brass and activists, because I think, I really want the activists to feel that we heard them and that we do some things that make them feel valued for coming out, but I also want to make sure that the, our police officers realize that we hear and we understand that their job is really difficult. It's not something that I could ever do or want to do. And I'm sure that some of us feel the same way, but that doesn't mean that we don't want to see our constituency devalued either. So, we want to make sure that we're working together and I think that we can do that. In Pittsburgh, we've raised some standards. With that said, can I have a motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Yeah, aye.
Aye.
Meetings adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great break.